It's organized a little bit differently than our budget. It does start with the general fund, which is Fund 010. It goes into some special funds, mainly courts and then the police and private pension funds, special revenue funds, which means they have, like it sounds, an income tax or other dedicated revenue. And then on pages seven and eight, the remaining funds. I'm just going to take you briefly some of the numbers and areas that I thought might be of note. And at the end or during, please feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions you have. I'm going to start on page three, Exhibit One. Three lines down, three over, you see this year's projected municipal income tax, nine point two million. You see that that's approximately one hundred and eight thousand dollars more than last year's. We are trending ahead of last year's income tax. That has to do a large part with when cable is in, in the year. The number next to it, column five, ten point four five million, is the result of the past income tax letter. So the projected revenue for next year, you see in that column five. If you drop all the way down to the bottom, total revenue, you see the projection for this year and the projection for next year. The one difference that everybody is well aware of, well, several differences, but the main difference would be that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that is transferred through safety levy capital in this year's budget will not be transferred in next year's budget, meaning in essence that the increased one point four million dollars is reduced by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars because that transfer is not necessary because of layoffs. On to page four. If you look at leisure time activities on the left, and you drop down, you see total leisure time activities. The one leisure time activity that was under the general fund was the swimming pool. You'll note that there was a budget in thirteen and fourteen. There is no pool in fifteen or sixteen, so that number does not give revenue or expense. And continuing to have an enterprise, of course, the other picture. Basic utility services, that's trash pickup. I want to point out that we're in the middle of our cost allocation study, done by Maximus. And it seems likely to me, or at least possible, that this basic utility services could become an enterprise fund after that review, based on fees that we collect and the cost of the services. So this is a, this is an area that we could see pulled out of the 2016 general fund budget. Onto page five. The one area that you see a little bit different dropping down happening in page five, debt service showing up next year for the garbage truck, which shows up this year as the under, looks like under contractual services and supplies and materials under on page four. So at the bottom of page five, you have revenues over or under expenditures. This is the question that everybody's been asking, what is our projected carryover for next year? As of right now, I'm projecting a deficit of three hundred and six thousand dollars and a projected ending cash balance of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Next year, I essentially project a balanced budget, revenue over expenditures of two thousand dollars, and I'm basically not moving that carryover balance. On pages six and six A and six B, municipal court, police, private pension, those funds are separate from the general fund. And our court funds are derived from fees and penalties of the court itself design. Police and private pension actually gets some revenue from county property tax, and the remainder is transferred from the general fund into those pension funds to cover the police and private pension costs. Onto page six D, expenditures under recreation, leisure time activities. This is where you see the in column three, four, the cost of the pool add back into recreation. These pages get a little bit hard to read, but on to page seven, very top, the street construction, two point three million. That is the additional, that includes the additional income tax that was passed in May. And so if you were prepared to last year, this would be a bigger number, five, one point four million dollars. Likewise, expenditures of zero. Onto page eleven. This is just a breakdown of our current debt obligations and next year's debt service amounts. Currently just under thirteen million in debt owed, and next year's payments equal approximately nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. That is the tax budget in a nutshell. As it's due to the county on Wednesday, I would request your favorable vote on the waiver of free reading rule passage tonight. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you, members.
No comments from councilmembers. Other comments from other officials? Comments from the public? Well, I'm seeing none, but we'll call that being closed. And we'll now move on to tonight's council meeting. And we have the roll call, please.
Trussell, here. Tappert, here. Cole, here. Patrick.
Here.
Neal. Gray.
Here.
Florrie. Here. Parker.
Here.
Ames.
Would you rise for the people?
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the heavens, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members have a call to the minutes from the last meeting. We have a motion to, to approve as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Is there a second? Second, let us point out. Roll call?
Trussell, yes. Tappert, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florrie. Yes. Parker.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Minutes will stand as presented. Takes us to reports from committees. Mrs. Tappert. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss any new legislation. Question has been made. Is there a second? Mr. Florrie. Roll call?
Trussell, yes. Tappert, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florrie. Yes. Parker.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
That motion passes, and council is now in executive session. Mrs. Tappert. It's seven to your end, Mrs. Ames. Roll call on the motion.
Trussell, yes. Tappert, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florrie. Yes. Parker.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
We're back to regular session, and that is to report to the committees. Mrs. Tappert.
The utilities committee has one item on tonight's agenda, item number seven. It's the first reading of an ordinance to appropriate twenty thousand dollars for the extension of the drainage water main to the side of North Bridge Street at Oakton Road. And as the utilities director is playing, we will extend our existing water line across North Bridge Street to the gas line unit at the corner of Bridge Street and Oakton. This is a plan to upgrade the convention, keep our water line on common drive. There will be a letter of consent signed by the wine bar owner, the property owner, and a statement that they will annex when they become contiguous. Again, approval from ODOT to go on the bridge street, and also approval from the law director to afford on the subject.
Mrs. Gray.
And President Elanardo, the community resources committee has one item on the agenda at this time. I just have to make a request to waive the three day seat room. It is referenced to an ordinance authorizing the penetration to hire two additional police officers for creating seven, six thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for salary increases in the fairing of employees.
The second has been waived by Mrs. Ames. Roll call on the motion to waive the three day seat room.
Trussell, yes. Tappert, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick.
Yes.
Neal.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Florrie. Yes. Parker.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
So that item will be added to the seating schedule.
Thank you. The community resources committee met on July ninth to discuss this with Mayor, as well as Chief Barsburn, and proposal that would be forward, that generated this request. We initially had said that there would be a special meeting this Wednesday, the fifteenth. We are not going to have that special meeting with the boy head and let this be read this evening and have it be read again on the twenty seventh at our regular session at that time. Given the body that we have, our financials for this due to request, I would request at that time to waive the that agreement.
Thank you. Other reports, Mrs. Trussell.
Thank you, President Elanardo. The finance committee has four items on tonight's agenda. I am pleased the first reading of ordinance to authorize the addition of track over voting within the city of our children's property insurance policy. It's an annual cost of six thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. In fact, traffic accidents last October discovered that numbers of traffic vehicle equipment throughout the city is covered under our city insurance policy. Fortunately, the motor system, our performance was insured. We determined that a twenty-two month length of hit on our performance could cost us as much as a hundred thousand dollars to replace that. Six thousand dollars would be a wise investment to ensure our performance. I implore this first reading of ordinance to transfer three thousand dollars from equipment small machine to capital equipment to purchase a lawnmower from Station Four where there's a large amount of grass remote. Prior to the moaning, no one will have it. And having tried, but the current lawn mower is variable and worn out. Present time, they are having a private contract to mow the grass. Since the mowing season is well underway, I had initially wanted to appropriate a motion to waive the three vehicle of the chief, chief here tonight to force in on what I'd like to say about that. I talked a little about different ways to know here. One of the situations we brought up is the possibility of purchasing a lawnmower for parks and recreation. Since they use a lawnmower five days a week, eight hours a day, they give a lawnmower that reviews for the fire department. And I think that's a better way of putting it, would appease more members of council that will have to discuss that this night in the long. Item five, the first reading of ordinance to appropriate five hundred dollars for the design and review board to pay legal transcription fees. Since the city does not have a legal reporter on staff, it is necessary to power a legal transcriptionist for the ERV public hearing regarding the spent building. The five hundred dollars is needed to pay this person who has been waiting for the money owed for them to be done for him or not, not at the appropriate time or much, to waive the three vehicle. And item six, the first reading of resolution adopting the Act plus the city's old project for a calendar year, January one, and at the appropriate time, I will make the motion, waive the three vehicle. Next, please come on to board.
Thank you, Mr. Trussell. Roll call.
The technology committee has one item on tonight's agenda, that is item number eight. It deals with program rating funds for the implementation of an off-site data backup solution for the tax department. I am sure the auditor will have some more details during his report, but in short, this appropriates one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars to unappropriated general fund and into two accounts, seven hundred dollars into income tax to do the maintenance account and seven hundred and seventy dollars into income tax maintenance contracts. This will provide for off-site backup to protect from problems that could arise should our in-house servers have had a failure. I would like us to go to first read tonight, but we will hold a committee meeting to address questions about the process and before we have another meeting. Then I will jump to safety service, sorry. Safety service, my other committee, has three items on tonight's agenda. Item number ten deals with accepting and appropriating seven hundred and fifty dollars from the ALPS to be used by Children's Fire Department for their senior home inspection program. And at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three read rule so that we can get that program funded. Items number nine and eleven both deal with trade-in of old police cruisers towards the purchase of new cruisers. The police department would like to purchase slash lease, lease three Ford interceptor cruisers for their department, two marked and one unmarked. They plan to use seventeen thousand, nine hundred and one dollar and eighty-seven cents of capital levy, capital, safety levy capital vehicle fund for the first payment of fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars from, oh, and, oh, and for the first payment, and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars of safety levy capital vehicles for outfitting. These monies were already included in the budget for the purchase of one cruiser without considering a trade-in, and so we're going to reallocate that. The additional funds needed will come to nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents for this transaction to come out of the law enforcement trust fund monies to cover costs. So Norris has agreed to give us fifteen thousand, five hundred for the cruisers that we trade in and towards the cost of the three, two thousand fifteen Ford interceptors, which will be at Ohio State bid price of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. There are a few necessary changes to the ordinance that you received in the packet. It is currently written that it would, as it is currently written, it would seem that we were requesting to allocate additional funds, which we do not have, when in fact, we are just reallocating monies that have already been budgeted. I apologize for the confusion, and I am going to recommend that we allow to go to read tonight, and that I've worked with the law director to correct the ordinance, and it will be amended by substitution at our next meeting. In fact, it includes my.
Other reports. Mrs. Ames.
Development has one item on the agenda tonight. I have one, it's the second reading of the resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds in the number of six thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars as participating local funds for the 2016 Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission on behalf of the city. This is all annual legislation. This reservation is our commitment to OVRDC to continue our support and participation. No money is appropriated to OVRDC until the end of December 2015. In order to get this to OVRDC by the July twentieth deadline, I'd ask for you to waive the three read rule. Pass this motion.
Mrs. Ames, Mr. Tappert.
Thank you, President Elanardo. The engineering committee has one item on the agenda tonight, number two. It has to deal with renewable signs around the western elementary and school, field school, that's not very well explained. Also, the health meeting, the intake committee held a meeting on July eighth concerning the CCT project in Walnut Street. We discussed any possible liability issues with this project. All in attendance approved the project and put it back into the law director for authorization. I also turned in assignment fifteen and three to the law director. His assignment was dealing with the change of parking, angle parking on South King Street from Main to Fifth Street. This is adjacent with the car lot project. Also, the committee was exceed of assignment fifteen ninety-one concerning borrowing the monies to jumpstart the road improvement project. And apparently by my emails, the mayor suggested I have a meeting on Wednesday. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll send an email out tonight for a meeting on this project, this improvement project. And if somebody can guarantee the room is filled before class, I'll be out of town tomorrow. No, I'll go ahead and send email out. And that concludes my reports.
Mr. Tappert. Other reports. Mr. Parker.
Thank you, President Elanardo. The Parks and Rec Committee did meet, I think it was one of the last days we had sunshine, it's probably. On June twenty-fourth in the city park, I appreciate everybody coming outside to meet that day. And we have no legislation this evening, but, and then, I don't know if the mayor has anything about the stairs, but one of the reasons we met down there was to look at the stairs going up to the flood wall, which are in dire need of repair. And I think it was also reported in the newspaper, but we were waiting on bids to come back. So hopefully in the future, we'll be having some legislation for monies for that. And that's it.
Mr. Parker. Anyone else? Reports from officials, mayor, your seat.
President Elanardo, since you have two items to review, you know, that was still issued last week. Select the community of Los County Angel adopted the partnership program, which is funded by the Department of Justice. This will primarily be a financial job restriction type of funding program for drug report. This one became law enforcement, also enforcement of the education program. Last Thursday, we also had a yard portion for Ed Hughes from Council Center Courts, he's a speaker. Ed has had a substantial operation during the course of right now, the president, something that Los County is sorely missing. So in my discussion with that, we're getting the process of getting involved with the president of the treatment centers, Children's Hospital of Los County. There's going to be zoning issues and community terms. If we have some public meetings about this, things get a little bit better, I think, would be necessary. The regional medical center actually have a hospital, really, for medical insurance. Mark Schuler, CEO of the Department of Health and Security, for the community of Los Angeles. We also had a meeting last week with our medical insurance carrier. We talked about the 2016 medical insurance program. We got that rolled down to a minimal increase. We're talking about reporting back to the way the insurance was backed up last year. Remember this year, we put the higher deductible, this was standard savings. And unfortunately, I have that saving to pay the bill insurance to take care of the additional benefits. The deductible is running out on the course, but the complications with that, with that system first comes. It's not being administered effectively by Avalon. So this minimal increase that we're talking about in this, that is on top of your pain minus the savings. So we still realize a portion of that savings, and we have a, just a, by the way, a hundred and thirty percent of medical insurance, which at this stage of the Department of Health and Care Act is pretty much. More details will be reported on that as soon as we can. I'd like to invite everybody out to comment, Justin, for various messages. This is, uh, President Dr. Barry, sports anchor on Channel Two. And his daughter tragically killed by distracted driving. And it'll be a good presentation on that tomorrow in my time flight, at seven thirty, Justin. Finally, I'll be out for knee surgery, I'm obviously third. My witness, first out, obviously. In fact, it will be operating out of the house for the time necessary, so I can get back in office.
Thank you, President. Just touch on the end items tonight. First on item four, that's the purchase of the lawnmower. First thing to note, you have a request from the Department of City. It's not an appropriation of money, it's money that is appropriated for small machines within his general fund operating money. So basically, the request is money from operating to capital. This is probably the item that I got the most calls on today. And I think Chief Crete gives a good explanation of why he needs the mower and also his department's ability to care for the model. As Councilman Trussell mentioned, the one thing is that it is general fund money, it's not safety levy capital money. And that I posed the question of another part of that mode, you might be able to know better lightly using that sort of thing. So the, the effect on the general fund is nil. The, the cost of the, the contract going, I believe, is seventy, eighty dollars a week. And that'll take us, if it stops raining, maybe another thousand dollars over the year. So you can see how that adds up quickly. But I know that, you know, it's something that the department has done for a long time. So the overall measure of impact is the main, main objective for doing everything we can to help it through. The other topic, of course, is the tax budget. I would request your support, waiver of free reading rule passage tonight. As Councilman Cole mentioned, we can discuss in committee the need for modernizing our tax information backup. And there's a seat for both the police fun, staffing request and cruiser request we talked about. And I'll update you on those items for the next meeting. In conjunction with Councilman Trussell, I'd like to call a request that a financial review session will involve before the next scheduled council meeting. It is my plan to use the Open Gov software to present that six-month budget review. I think that should equip this council with not only information to go forward with what's happened this year, but access from council and the public to look at our finances and see how they operate. So try and figure out if we can do some sort of PowerPoint. Sure, the technology, maybe Chair by people can help me out with that. But I think, I think at six thirty, an hour, she may have to cover it on the, on the twenty-seventh. Who's that?
President Elanardo, the law director's office is currently working with the engineering committee and the city engineer, Tom Day. Michael Touch is on the ordinance, that would be. that would create the community workers agreement. Our goal is to get that ordinance from the court council in time, um, to improve the agreement languages of two thousand fifteen streets and alleys, which should council decide to pass that ordinance. Secondly, the law director's office recently took place in the conference hall at the Ross County Courthouse. During the taking back, making our press conference, we addressed the victims, family and citizens, the exercise of continuing commitment to collaborating with all the agencies and assisting during, um, you know, the investigations going on with the, uh, the drug issue and the missing revenue issue. Our goal is to hold offenders accountable for their actions and keep Chillicothe safe. Since that conference, we've learned of, uh, Chillicothe's acceptance, uh, the, uh, the state's granting of the heroin partnership, and we're looking forward to working with those agencies to bring that program into fruition. Finally, our office has assisted in facilitating and participated with Southern Ohio Police Training Institute in their court scenario drills. Before those drills were held, the cadets were dispatched to different calls ranging from domestic violence, underage drinking, stop sign violations, and then we placed those cadets in a real-time court scenario, which was held after hours at the municipal court. And I'd like to thank, um, Judge Eddie for participating along with Chase Carter from the Public Defender's Office, yes, as our, uh, defense counsel and, uh, myself and my assistant, Carrie Rollin, all participate in that. And we, um, made them testify, we cross-examined them in preparation for their careers law enforcement officers. They recently graduated and we wish them all the best. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much. By way of President's report, council members will all remember summary that, uh, promises to you all each quarter, so currently nine months, um, you see, they, um, missing documentation for our report, please refer to my attention, so I think that's how. At this time, Chief Creed, would you like to address that?
Yeah. Um, in regards to the mower for station four, the mower that we're asking to replace is nineteen years old, in the fall back. Not many mowers out there are metal, it still pumps the fire protection period equipment. And we look at fire trucks and fire stations, we are very much in care of the same container, those are dollars they're using, the public, we start to take care of them, keep that for our public. Um, that mower rotates last year, here later this year, they tried to start a three-point garden, it will not start a mower today, because it pieces, it's inside, the deck doesn't fit on, probably four, one, one. Uh, at the rate that we're paying to have a mower, we'll spend about seven hundred dollars a year to have a mower, lots of money outside. To me, that's a waste of general funds, we could be doing it ourselves. I can buy a mower for someone for twenty-five hundred, three thousand dollars, be good mower, that again will last me fifteen to twenty years. Us, most grass, take care of itself, we take pride in our service, pride in our property, pride in our city, we might take that for adopt, take that property, not somebody else to, to look for. Uh, and I'm not asking for additional funds from general funds, just asking new funds within the general fund, from, that's when, for, for the small equipment, new capital equipment. Uh, I have asked park director and service director if they had the ability to, uh, cooperate with the need of acceleration, etc. Not, unfortunately, wouldn't do so. I then also asked if they had developed a transfer of the repair department, so we could do it on our own, and they said, no. So I don't think any of those are viable options at this time, and I think if you contract that care, non-invested, uh, seven hundred dollars a year is not a money, but why waste that money? Why not let us take care of it as, uh, we prefer to take care of our, our home? So, um, I would ask that they consider, that you guys consider waiting for your rule and give us the opportunity to get that, so that we can, to see if the contract services might be able to get that.
I forgot to mention two questions that were brought up to me today.
Okay.
First is, do you know if, um, if you buy something that a snowmobile or something a blade can be attached to?
I'm looking at both options, whether to reserve term, which, uh, have a lot of snow blowers right there, or buy one that I can, and yes, I can't buy one, the blades are about three, four hundred dollars, I think, still, but that's what we currently have, what we use it for during the year months as well. Um, so I'm looking at both options, either one, probably I have to buy a snow blade or a snow blower, kind of like what I'm buying. But, uh, I'm still, I got, everybody has their opinion, I've got, or forty different ones apart, so I'm looking at that probably, so, together.
The other question was, and I'm almost reluctant to bring it up in this forum, but, um, uh, does the, the curb mower having to train a guy?
No.
I just.
There may be few pieces of parts on it that, the guy that works on a mower seem like, um, you're, you're, like, I can imagine, like, 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 it's, this decides to, uh, it, I mean.
It's probably not very safe.
Probably not. But like I said, we, we managed with it, because we did more work on it, and now we're at four, we just wanted that option. So, any other questions for me?
Just have one more question, I, I heard you mention Parks and Rec, but about city services.
I asked, yeah, I asked both city service and park director, and both said that they did not have the ability to, they did not have the ability to. Yep.
Is there, um, self-propeller?
I haven't really, um, our goal is to deal with both as quickly as possible, self-propeller would not be, be able to do a plate, but, um, again, that is, we looked, our website, that is misleading, the line actually goes, you know, on the fire hydrant, which is where we moved through the vector of twenty-four feet past, uh, back to Ohio University, that did, that only twenty-four feet times about a hundred and ninety feet of our property for us for the last, not fifty years. And I have, oh, that's, 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 but, uh, you cannot do that with a push mower. Um, but the trouble is, is that they get first check of warning, they get three yields today, they need to eat, they got seven, eight, nine, ten, fifteen calls a laundry today, um, they gotta work on the cars, they gotta train, they gotta do, and on top of that, they got a notice station, and they go, I want to be able to quickly get it done, and it's been raining, been called, you try to push the, by the time we get it done, no limit, we know that the next one, it's, it's just not, it's not a feasible option, though it's not, so it's, yeah, they could get it done if they want to, but by the time for, for next week, they'll be starting it soon enough, just because of the reality of what they, they want to do.
How long is it to get it done?
Well, the push mower would be probably four or five hours.
I don't understand.
With, with tractor, forty-two hours.
I just, my concern is, can you, where, where you just direct rights?
There, there'd be a pay in this.
They're on, they're, they're.
It's not like I'm paying them overtime, coming in, there would be a pay for their own shift, but it's part of our station, I don't have that at the location, but that's one station, that is one station, so, yeah, I mean, it's not costing the city employees that much. It depends on, so you don't, our, our home, sorry. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Floris, our public comment, so anyone would like to address the outside seat?
See, now, nobody else. I always get something said.
He said you made him address the, uh, Ron Delory, and I live at ninety-four King Street
here in Chillicothe. Well, I, I was talking, I came up here just to catch up, because I've made it to any council meetings lately, but also talking with Nancy and Rick Todd about a couple of things, one is the nuisance in our area, and, uh, I was trying to figure out, I know the guys work this hell off, because I watch them down there giving them to them, but they'll, like, mow the front yard and the backyard still like that, and find them and not go under the fact, because I come to only pay the rent, so why they bother to pay the, the fine unless you threaten them? They think they're going to have to yell probably now, but. Two, I was talking about panhandling, how like they're around the Walmart, human mall and everything down through that, of course, the ladies were, Barney, some of it is, uh, county, and the mall, what is that council? Where, where, well, it seems to me as, I've been sitting back here thinking about it, seems to me as, since you guys are our city council, and that's becoming a serious problem, it really is starting to become a very serious problem, they've started to get rather aggressive, and to be honest, I'm, I'm a little wary to go out there and eat late, you know, if something happens, I have to go to store at night. I'm a little wary about that. I've watched them get in fights over spots, you know, so, it seems to me as city council, with our little lawyer over here, you can't all get together with the county and maybe have a council with the private sector out there to see if you can get something done about that, or at least, you know, because it's, it's a threat to their businesses too, eventually, and that's another thing, bringing to panhandling, which brings me, you want a resident thing, what do you think they're out there panhandling on this? Most of them are, are, most of them are cracked out anyway when they get there, or thrown out. So what kind of danger is that proposing to the rest of the citizens that we're setting in? I've got, and, and don't, don't talk to me about residential treatment and all that, it's not like I don't deal with, haven't dealt with, uh, abuse and all that. Matter of fact, I'm raising a one-year-old and two-year-old, do the same thing, but it's not, because she hasn't had to help, but she had tons of, left, she back at it again. So I'm raising a one-year-old and two-year-old, my great niece and nephew, and our cousin, being up teen, different perhaps, up teen, different, but wait, it's deal, gonna wind up dead on the street, this is not gonna, and it's, it's not like I don't, I went to a few meetings and talked about buying a town and the drugs and stuff, and I, I didn't constantly feel like I was being talked down to, or like I was looking down on the people that live in the apartments and other things like that, that has nothing to do with it, it has, um, for personal choices, these kids, these kids have made their choices, some of them do not want any help, and until they do, they're up high, and the ladies who've been up missing, I, I, I have a up most sympathy for their families, but their families also know what those ladies were, were, the choices they were making. And, uh, sometimes you don't have to start cracking down and stop looking for a way to help them all the time, that's, that's all there is to it. My aunt, she almost lost everything she's got, trying to help. It's not the first time that somebody in our family is down. So sometimes they gotta make their own choices, so we can spend the money trying to help, trying to help, trying to help, or we can try to, you know, because they're not gonna change, they are not gonna change. Some will, by the good old days, they'll check, but not because they get their, sometimes that's too late. So that's my piece, I'm out, see ya.
Anyone else? All business. Mr. Trump.
Thank you. Last council session, I reported on five oh eight Johnson. I want to thank members of council, almost every single member of council got qualified, yes, administration, Mike Green, and the chief of police. Let's like we're coming into this, uh, that it was evicted, well, it's in the process of being evicted, uh, at the current time, and I, you know, just want to make everyone know, everybody jumped on the bandwagon, helped us out with this, all of them, all did a big job, you know, that was. Now, I'd like to talk over about S4 dills, uh, the main project. I'd like to get that started. First thing we need to do is impress S4 teams, these folks who are ones that know their vote times, both let us say, if they vote for it, because they want the street state to care about. Now, no motion, more budget, can't do that before that, mine is, I, has to happen, because that's the bottom of the dill, you can't do the top of the dill first, then you do the bottom, so, mine is, I, answer that first, plus also is putting to us the mining project, uh, on western end, so it's happening tonight, I'd like to have the mayor, on the, and, uh, police director, and the district mayor all put together, uh, discuss something about this and this, and, uh, talk all about it, uh, uh, just like, uh.
Can I, I've got something else to say, can I comment on that or not?
No, I think we're close. Other all business? Yes, this side.
Uh, conditions with the really nice articles I possess, putting about the nuisance officer of his words, uh, I will get with you on that about nuisance issues, and, uh, we do have a meeting tomorrow at two thirty with the nuisance officer, hopefully, if you can make it, but he is just questioning, but between trying to write parking tickets and doing the news is too important, you know, I just wish we had two more off surprise, he needs to do a big job. But if you've got nuisance complaints, I just, uh, met that this issue at five oh eight Johnson was back in February, that's when it started, and I didn't know that until late February.
No, it was, well, I'll, I'll talk about it.
So, anyway, but, uh, just wanted to let Tom speak, everybody pick a problem, and it's nice to see us work together and get something solved.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. Other all business? All right, next item, petition to the correspondent, you see, about.
I have nothing to do with this.
New business.
This one, I'd just like to let everybody know that the park and rec board will be meeting on Wednesday at five o'clock across the street at the municipal building, and they'll be discussing, uh, flood wall steps, uh, flood wall mowing, and just including special events.
Are there other meeting dates that need to be included in legislation? It takes us to legislation.
Second reading of a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds in the amount of sixty-nine hundred forty-four dollars as participating local funds for twenty sixteen to the Ohio Valley Regional Development Commission on behalf of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, second reading.
Mrs. Ames. Is there a second? Mrs. Patrick. Will call on the motion, agree.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick, yes. Neil, yes. Gray, yes. Floriman, yes. Porter, yes. Ames, yes.
Motion cares. Will call on the ordinance.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick, yes. Neil, yes. Gray, yes. Floriman, yes. Porter, yes. Ames, yes.
Motion has a reservation in the reservation passes. Item number two.
Second reading of an ordinance authorizing the removal of the school designation for traffic control and all school traffic signage relating to the now closed Western Elementary School and Smith Middle School within the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, second reading.
Item number three.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the appropriate city officials to add traffic controllers located within the City of Chillicothe to the city's property insurance policy at an initial cost of sixty-two hundred sixty-two dollars fifty cents and declare an emergency, first reading.
Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds in the amount of three thousand dollars for the purchase of lawn mower, garden tractor, for fire department station four, and declare an emergency, first reading.
Mr. Truschel.
As stated in my report, I'd like to make motions to wait for your approval.
Is there a second? Mr. Florina. Will call on the motion, wait for your approval.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick, yes. Neil, yes. Gray, yes. Floriman, yes. Porter, yes. Ames, yes.
Motion cares. Will call on the ordinance.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick, yes. Neil, yes. Gray, yes. Floriman, yes. Porter, yes. Ames, yes.
The ordinance has passed. Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating five hundred dollars for the design review board to pay legal transcription fees and declare an emergency, first reading. Recent statement on report, I'd like to make a motion to wait for your approval.
Okay, second. Second, I'm just, Cole. Will call on the motion, wait for your approval.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes. Cole, yes. Patrick, yes. Neil, yes. Gray, yes. Floriman, yes. Porter, yes. Ames, yes.
Motion cares.
Motion carries, will call on the ordinance.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes.
Cole, yes.
Patrick, yes.
Neil, yes.
Gray, yes.
Lorimer, yes.
Porter, yes.
Ames, yes.
The ordinance has passed. Item number six.
First reading of a resolution adopting the tax budget for the city of Chillicothe, Ohio, for the calendar year beginning January one, twenty sixteen, submitting the same to the county auditor, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Is that money on the table?
Yes.
It's the twentieth, actually, for, uh, for five, that's the county auditor, but it is the fifteenth for council passes, so.
Mr. Truschel. Second, I'm going to say, will call on the motion to waive three vehicles.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes.
Cole, yes.
Patrick, yes.
Neil, yes.
Gray, yes.
Lorimer, yes.
Porter, yes.
Ames, yes.
Motion carries, will call on the resolution.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes.
Cole, yes.
Patrick, yes.
Neil, yes.
Gray, yes.
Lorimer, yes.
Porter, yes.
Ames, yes.
The resolution has passed. Item number seven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating twenty thousand dollars for the extension of an eight-inch water main to the east side of North Bridge Street at Oak Town Road, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Item number eight.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating funds for the implementation of an off-site data backup solution for the city income tax department, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Item number nine.
First reading of an ordinance declaring certain vehicles obsolete or not needed, and authorizing the safety service director to sell said vehicle simultaneously with the purchase lease of three new vehicles, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Item ten.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the city of Chillicothe to accept and appropriate a grant in the amount of seven hundred fifty dollars from the Chillicothe Phelps, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
I'd like this time to request the remain three vehicles.
Second, Mr. Neil. Will call on the motion.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes.
Cole, yes.
Patrick, yes.
Neil, yes.
Gray, yes.
Lorimer, yes.
Porter, yes.
Ames, yes.
Motion carries, will call on the ordinance.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes.
Cole, yes.
Patrick, yes.
Neil, yes.
Gray, yes.
Lorimer, yes.
Porter, yes.
Ames, yes.
And the ordinance has passed. Item eleven.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating funds for the purchase, lease, and cost of outfitting three cruisers for the Chillicothe Police Department, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Item twelve.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the administration to hire two additional police officers appropriating seventy-six thousand nine hundred twenty dollars for salary and fringe, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
I complete satisfaction with the meeting. Mr. Florina, is that such, that is, will call on the motion to adjourn.
Truschel, yes. Patrick, yes.
Cole, yes.
Patrick, yes.
Neil, yes.
Gray, yes.
Lorimer, yes.
Porter, yes.
Ames, yes.
We are adjourned.